What?
I don't know what that means.
Okay. This is, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm so grateful that we have added an extra meeting so we can sit and discuss things as we should be able to in Sunshine. I would like to discuss, now, we're being, we are being beat up in the public about this, this rate increase for utilities. And we're, as I said before, even starting the campaign, we're in an inflection point in the history of this city. And, and I think right now, and it's just me, but I've been here nineteen years. We, we as residents are paying for a lot of mistakes in the past. And we can go back to, I wish Helena was here. If you could get her down here, that'd be nice. City manager, how much, how much debt are we still paying for from when we first bought the wastewater and water treatment facilities?
The original purchase.
The original purchase.
So I can tell you that the total collection of our long-term debt schedule is one hundred and fifty-five million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's principal and interest that's in our long-term debt.
Okay.
Some of that's been refinanced.
Right. And, and the city has, you know, did acquire additional debt through adding and expanding different facilities. So, you know, over the time since the city has acquired the utility, that is our total outstanding debt.
Okay. So we, so a good way to summarize this is, we have been in debt as far as water, wastewater, since the inception of this city. Is that an accurate statement? And we, we are currently still paying on that debt.
Yes.
Is that an accurate statement? Okay. So that's since nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, I didn't know that, Mr. Mayor. That's a good.
Two thousand and three.
When you brought it up a few weeks back.
Two thousand and three. And I would go as far as to say, when ITT sold the, the water, the water system to that utility company for twenty-five million dollars. And this is something that came from Pierre. I'll give Pierre a plug on this one, and we can try to figure out if it's, if it's a true statement. Mr. Delorenzo, can you come up too? I'm gonna have some questions for you. Let's see.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you. Let me find it. I'm sorry. I should have pulled this up prior. When I, when I posed a question some time ago about how much we paid for the wastewater and water treatment facility, Pierre felt that, that he should contact me with a little tidbit of information. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Believe it or not, I talk to Pierre every now and again. Let me get to it. I don't wanna hold everybody up. Okay, so we paid, they sold the wa, the water waste and water treatment facility and all of the components for twenty-five million dollars in nineteen ninety-nine. And Pierre said, plus, a thousand dollars every time there was a hookup until two thousand and seven.
They got royalties on essentially future.
And, and the worst part of it is, that was nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-five million dollars.
Yeah.
When they sold it. We bought it in two thousand and three for eighty-three million, plus an additional like twenty million to get it up to standard because it was garbage when we bought it. They had done nothing to it. Correct, City Manager?
That's what I've been told.
So we have been in the hole since our inception as a city, as far as water is concerned. And it is, it's, it's ridiculous. And, and everybody that's lived here for more than a minute knows that an average household, like mine, a hundred and sixty-five dollars a month for your city utilities is completely ridiculous. So we are, we are never gonna dig out of this hole. Mr. Delorenzo, how many houses do we currently have in the queue in the city?
Houses?
How many ha, how many?
Houses or lots, sir?
No, I'm sorry. How many housing units do we have in the queue for the city?
Lots that are ready to be built on?
That, that are in the planning process from?
Yeah.
The initial application?
Right.
To include infill lots, we know there's eight thousand infill lots, correct?
Seventy-five hundred or so, yes.
Yeah, right around eight thousand. So how many housing units do we have in the queue somewhere along the development process?
I think.
That have been approved, let's put it like that.
Yeah, but we, we'd analyzed that recently, and I believe it was nineteen?
About nineteen. Nineteen thousand?
Approximately nineteen thousand, we have the data. That includes the DRIs, all of them, or just the?
Just the.
Just the ones that are under construction?
Right, just the ones that are.
So not the western DRIs, right? Not the western DRIs because there's no infrastructure for them to start building anything. But the eastern DRIs are included. So, yeah, that, which would include the maximum yield from those, not necessarily the, the development pattern once they went through it, but roughly nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand housing units. And we're proposing two bonds to bring our, just to catch up, because as it stands right now, if all those units were online today, would we be able to support them?
The nineteen thousand?
Yes.
Oh, no, sir.
Okay.
No, just like when, you know, when ITT started, they plotted forty-five thousand lots and two million gallon, because you try to time it with your development, so everyone is paying an equitable share.
So, once we get, all things considered, if we were to get to the capacity that we're looking for with all these bonds that we are gonna have issued, the two bonds, would we have enough water and wastewater to sustain those houses? Once those other nineteen, if they came fully online?
No, sir.
Okay. So everyone sees our dilemma here? We are never gonna catch up, and it's always gonna fall on the backs of our residents. So, and we've only had one read of that ordinance for increasing the water rates. So, and that was a three-one vote. So I can tell you right now, in open forum, when we come back for the second vote on that, I will be a no vote. Unless we put in a building moratorium on residential housing. We are not gonna keep building on something that we can't sustain and putting it on the back of our residents. They don't deserve it, I don't deserve it, nobody in this room deserves it. So either you're gonna, either the developers are gonna start doing industrial growth to bring in jobs, to offset our, our tax base, or we're gonna stop building houses altogether. And I would say, when I propose it, I'm gonna say to a date uncertain. Now, I know I'm gonna get pushback because, now, we can't stop building, we can't stop building. Well, if we don't stop building, we're gonna be broke, and we're gonna force lifetime residents of Florida and Flagler County to flee their homes because they cannot afford to live in this state anymore. Plain and simple. So we are, like I said, we are at an inflection point, and we need to fix it. And we are done with the storming as far as a council. We are in the norming. So we need to establish norms and do what's best for this city. And as Councilman Miller stated last week, or was this week, he's not worried about reelection. I'm not either. I'm a resident, I'm a, I'm a, I've lived in Palm Coast longer than I've lived anywhere in my life. And I'm not gonna put up with it. And I'm not gonna be berated every day saying I'm, you know, I'm in the pocket of developers, which I have never been. I'm gonna do what's right for this city. And we are at an inflection point, and we're gonna have to make those decisions. We are only four people making all these decisions for this city. And we are gonna do what's right, or the ship's gonna go down, all of us on it. We're all gonna be playing the fiddle on the, on the deck of the Titanic. And we are, we are fair, we have a fairly low tax, and we have to do what's right for our city. So I've looked for y'all's input, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thanks, thanks for sharing your thoughts on that. I think it's important that we all, you know, share our perspectives and, you know, I think everybody's been catching a ton of heat, you know, on our meeting right this, this week. And that's okay, we, we want, we wanna hear that feedback, that's why we have the different reads. But I'm gonna go back to a slide that was presented a long time ago with regards to the bonds and, and the costs associated with, with the improvements that we all know that we need to go do. All right, so the utility rate, the actual bond is gonna pay for forty percent of the improvements that we need. And it's kinda laid out, and, and Carl did a good job this week, kinda laying it out by project. Sixty percent of it is gonna be paid by impact fees from new development.
I think that's, you inverted it.
No, that's not, respectfully, I don't think that's right.
Forty percent?
I'm gonna look now.
Forty percent?
Yeah, please, I mean.
Sixty percent is from resident.
It's, it's, it's the famous money slide that we talked months ago.
But basically, what's going on in this city, it is a, it is a Ponzi scheme for more development. We are never gonna dig out of this hole. So I could say ten years from now, just ten years from now, your water bill's gonna be five hundred dollars.
I mean, I don't know about that. I guess my point is, if you place a moratorium in place, you're gonna not enable our city to fix these projects. Okay? It's not, it's not, it's not all bond. This, the, these impact fees play a major role in our ability to, to move forward. And so, so that, that's one. And then the impact on skilled workers, labors in our community, do we put them out of work by doing this? I mean, do we, do we create an unemployment issue, Mr. Mayor, for, for our community?
We have nineteen thousand units in the queue. And impact fees are not collected until when?
A building permit.
Building permit. So all these, say for example, up on the north end of Belt Air, at the, the corner of Matanzas and, Belt Air and Matanzas, right there on that corner, on the west side, there is already an apartment unit that is slated to go in there. They, they have already been approved. I remember going and seeing the video, they went through the rezoning of that. So that, that's an apartment unit there. Just south of that, between where the new townhouses are there, there's another one slated to go in there, another townhouse, I mean, another apartment unit. We just had this one over on Old Kings. My point is, we can't live local. And I asked the legal counsel, does, if we put in a moratorium, does that negate or stop any live local? Did you get an answer to that question?
Well, you, you would have to apply it across the board, you can't apply it to live local only, obviously.
Well, no, I'm saying as, as housing, multifamily, single housing, single-family housing, any housing, if we say no more family housing in the, in the interim, would that apply to live local? Or can they say, no, we're still gonna build because we're following a live local?
I think your moratorium is applied to housing in general, it would apply to live local.
Okay.
We'd have to, you know, consider a lot more of the implications of what you're proposing and.
That.
Not necessarily that simple, we just say no more.
I think that's my question, is, is, there's a lot of different flavors of a moratorium, so to speak, right? Is it, is it all? Is it current applications? Is it only certain types? Is it infill lots versus, you know?
I have, I have no problem with people that own infill lots being able to build on their property. That's, that's excluded. Anything that's in the queue that has been approved, I have no problem with that. But anything going forward, I would say stop it until we, even if it's until our water is brought up to where it needs to be. Because we are, we're in a pinch. So say we, we, we spend this, these millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to fix our water treatment facility, it's not gonna stop there. Once all those houses, once those nineteen thousand house, nineteen thousand units come online, or whatever the number, depending on rezoning and stuff like that, we are still gonna be in the negative. We are not gonna, it's not sustainable.
So, Mr. Mayor, do, I'm trying to understand, just kinda with Councilman, you know, Miller, you know, so are, what, are you proposing is like to, to date, date to be determined, you know, we not move forward on westward expansion? Is that what you're proposing?
Pretty much, yes.
That.
We're not gonna be permitting new developments out west, because even out there, we can't sustain, we can't sustain what we have in the queue now, much less more out there. That doesn't, that doesn't stop us from doing industrial growth, commercial growth. I'm talking about family dwelling units. And right now, they're flooding the zone. I don't know if you guys know it or not, but if you write up US One on the north end where I live, the land has been raped. It's ready for housing units to go in there. So why are we gonna keep putting more houses in the queue when we can't sustain what we have, nor can we sustain what we have in the queue at present time?
Just to understand too, you know, this comes with a lot of detail that, that would need to be kind of defined, you know, what is that threshold, right, of when that moratorium stops? Things like that.
Well, that would be for the council, that would be for the council. At least, at least two of us are here for four years. So you and I will be making those decisions in the future. And hopefully.
No, I got that.
My vice mayor will be here beside me and you, Mr. Gambaro.
But the, you know, the implication was, you know, next week's vote is dependent upon agreeance of this, so that would have to be defined for me to know if I'm okay with it or not.
Well, that's why we're here now, we got until noon to figure it out.
Okay.
So I'm saying no more, no more approval of any more residential housing to a date uncertain.
I think the problem, Mr. Mayor, is that, and I appreciate you bringing it to council, but trying to define it with, with no background information, without a defined, makes it hard to have this conversation because I don't know exactly what we're talking about.
And the unintended consequences.
And, and so I appreciate it, I would say that this should come back before us, and we should talk about it, but then with, with more detail and kind of information to work from.
Well, you got a, you got a week or so to marinate on it, because next week, what do we have on the, the slate next week, City Manager?
Next week is a work, workshop, is your City Manager search and discussion of the wireless master plan.
Okay, when's the next business meeting?
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, and is that when we will be doing the second read on the utility?
Yes, that's when it's scheduled.
You have, you have two weeks to marinate on it, but, and for the vice mayor, you were asking about what's the alternatives? That was your no vote, was because what are the alternatives?
No, I didn't say what, I said there are.
Well, well, let's talk about those alternatives. What are the alternatives to raising the utility rate by thirty-something percent to try to bring our water capacity and our wastewater capacity up to speed? What's the alternative?
Okay, so I have moved for a moratorium twice in the last, probably less than a year. So I'm not adverse to the concept of it. Here, so factually, Councilman Gambaro, I'm looking at the pie charts from the last agenda on the utility rates. The funding for what was presented to us, forty-six percent will be paid by the fiscal year twenty-six bond, twenty-eight percent will be paid by the fiscal year twenty-eight bond, only ten percent is paid by impact fees, that's it. We have been charging way too little for impact.
Is that for one project?
This is the whole thing. I'm looking at the whole thing, so.
Jason, can you go into?
Can you clarify, because you had a previous slide, and you, you even referred to it as the money slide after I did, but can you, can you, can you walk us through that?
So I'm looking at the utility five-year capital improvement plan fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine, and ten percent is from impact fees. So here's my, I know what you're, I think I know what you're looking at, though, when you look at the years, there's a different breakdown for it. In the first year, the, the amount of impact fees is high, but then as you go on, there's none because they're depleted.
We're using the bond.
They're depleted, yeah. So we've been, we've been charging way too little for impact fees for way too long. We weren't charging miscellaneous fees and charges, which we could have been and should have been charging. We have been crop dusted, period. The time to take corrective action unfortunately leaves us with these very drastic measures. We're not the only ones that are encountering this, the whole state of Florida, I would say, by and large, are, are having these same conversations, and we've seen moratoriums get instituted, even as, even lately, across the state. Respectfully, Mayor, the ITT lots are what contribute to the issues with wastewater treatment plant one. So if we excluded those from the moratorium, we're not helping that situation much. So that, that's something that council needs to consider as we consider this, this high level concept. We just raised the impact fees and max we can raise them. So at least we've helped that situation. I firmly believe that if we scale back the CIP, and we do not pursue both of these bonds right now, we can still get this done. I think that pressure needs to be put on staff and our state representatives to get us the money, period. And I say that because the westward expansion has incredible implications for the state. Our state reps wanna see it happen because there are vital transportation networks that will run through that. It is in their interest, it is in the entire state's interest to help us get there. So, I, you know, whatever ears this needs to hit on that level, they need to be listening. We need help. And if we do a residential moratorium, which again, I'm not against, I've been in favor of it, it will hurt us from a standpoint of getting industry here and things like that. There, there is a possibility that it could hurt us. I don't think it's quite as inflammatory as people want to make it seem, particularly when we know there are a lot of cities that have moratoriums currently. But it, it will have some impact from that perspective. We also lose out on the impact fees that we just raised. So I see both sides of this, but in my opinion, the better way to go is to not get everything in the shopping cart. Take some things out, scale back the plan. And then we put pressure on staff, our, whoever's pursuing our grants, our lobbyists and our state representatives, to get us the funding. Because we, you're right, we cannot afford to keep building at the clip that we've been building with the water issues that we have. And we're here asking the residents to shoulder that burden unfairly once again. And I went back, again, to other rate studies, and I heard the same line in the last two presentations for the rate hikes. Well, if we do this, we won't have to raise rates the next time around. It was not true then, and I don't believe it's true now. I think that we will have to raise rates past the CIP, or the CPI, the next time the rate study comes around, because to your point, and to your point, Councilman Miller, impact fees never pay for the growth, and we are, we've been in a perpetual state of water deficit. So we can sit here, and, and no offense to staff, but staff can sit there because I know, none of us want to raise the rates. They can sit there and say, oh, well, if we do this now, we won't have to in the future. I don't buy it. Last council shouldn't have bought it. And it's not, I don't think it's last council's fault, because they did raise rates, they, they, actually, last council adopted what staff put in front of them. I'll say it again here, to not include the expansion of wastewater treatment plant one and the last CIP in two thousand and eighteen is beyond comprehension for me. I don't know how that was not included. I can't, I can't comprehend it. But we're past that, we can't do anything about it. But I won't reward it either, and that was the reason for my no vote. I will not reward a three hundred, over three hundred percent increase in the ask between two thousand and eighteen and now, because again, that is not tenable for our organization. If every single fund operated that way, we would be bankrupt. We cannot go on that way. So my position is that we need to press our consultant and our representatives from every which way to help us address this issue. We scale back what we're asking for the second, for the second read, and we come back with a more reasonable ask, so that we're not laying this entire bomb at the feet of our residents. And if we need to consider a moratorium because that is not an alternative that is presented to us, then that's what we need to consider.
I would agree. You, you've done more research on it than I, but you went back to the two thousand and thirteen and the two thousand and eighteen. And it's, it's safe for me to say that, and I'll come back to this point again, the developers have been taking advantage of this city for far too long. And I, I feel that when it comes time for that vote, first, I'm gonna propose a moratorium. And then, once we have that vote, we can move on to the rate. So if we wanna scale it back, if staff can come back and scale it back, but I'm, I wanna have that moratorium in place, and we can just as easily turn around and vote, vote it out. But we have to do something, we, we can't go on like this. And it's through no fault of ours, not one person sitting on this dice, it's not our fault. And I, I do not want elderly people hitting me up every day and saying, Mike, I'm not gonna be able to live in Florida, I'm gonna lose my house because I can't afford it. It may not seem like a lot of people who are, are getting by or are doing very well in, in our society, but for someone on a fixed income that's living on social security, her husband's passed away. I have one friend, you know, dear, dear friend of mine, she's on her own. She has somebody else pay her property tax for. That's how bad off she is. And, and I can't see moving on, and I'm gonna do what's right for the city. So that's what I'm gonna propose, at, when we come down to that vote, that's the way it's gonna play out, so.
Conceptually, Mayor, may I just share something? You know, we keep having this discussion about affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, and quite frankly, I think that's smoke and mirrors. Because when we talk about, let's make living here affordable, we completely forget about things like this. We, 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 we use the term affordable housing like it's this defined term when it's not. And, and then we say, well, we need to, we need to increase density and bring in a bunch more units because that'll make housing affordable. And then when we bring in all this density, what does that cause? Water shortages. What does that cause? Utility rates to go up. So you, you're taking away from one pot, you're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, and, and you're, and you're getting this extra density under the auspice of doing something good, affordable housing. And I, I don't, I don't believe in that. So I think that when we're talking about making Palm Coast an affordable place to live, and somewhere where young families, workforce families can thrive, it needs to be thought of at the highest of levels, and in a very robust way, and not in these silos. How are we actually making it possible for families to live and work and play and thrive in Palm Coast? So, you know, as we move forward, particularly with the comp plan, the LDC, all these things, I encourage council to always go back to that. Take it out of the silo and look at it from a very high level, because I've been struggling with this, you know, as a lot of things have, have, have come across. Stormwater, too, the more concrete you add, the more you're gonna, you're gonna hurt the flooding issues. So I would just encourage you all to really think about that, because we say we want to make Palm Coast affordable, and we're do, we're talking about the comp plan and affordable housing, but if we're just moving the cost of living from one line item to another, we're not helping anybody. So just really keep that in mind as we move forward, please.
And I, and I do feel that the units that we have in the queue, you can already see it now, prices are coming down.
They are.
They are, they are coming down because they are flooding the market. Considering my house costs three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. They're selling stick houses out on the west side for close to, to three eighty. Not nearly the quality, not nearly, nearly the quality or the size of property, and that's what we have going in. But right now, they keep flooding the market, and prices are come, are gonna come down. And as soon as these apartment units come online. going to come down. And as soon as these apartment units come online, hopefully, God willing, the rental rates will come down as well. So that's, that's just my perspective. I hate to be the, the one to bring it up, but that's going to be my approach coming these next couple of meetings. I'd, I'd also like to clarify something. When I said I contacted the AG at the last meeting, I meant I contacted the Attorney General's office. And I was, I spoke to the gentleman there about, you know, some of the things as far as an audit of the city is concerned. I was contacted yesterday and had a conversation with a representative from Senator Collins' office. I am waiting for a call back from them as far as speaking to Senator Collins. That is the joint legislative audit committee. So if we can get the, the, the ease our residents' minds about corruption and kickbacks and all that stuff, as far as a forensic audit, she knows specifically that I'm asking for that committee to form a task force to come down to audit, forensic audit our city. I have no problem with it. We, I am wholeheartedly in favor of those. You can doze it at the state level, bring it down here and look at our systems, our employees, everything. But I, I can tell you now, if we don't get these bonds and, and bring our water up, there's going to be some severe cuts. Our, our levels of service are going to come, go down. Because what comes next? Where's the money going to come from? It comes with tightening our belt, cutting staff. When you cut staff, you cut levels of service. So just keep that at the forefront of your mind. Any questions? What you got?
It's a, it's a lot to digest right now. So.
Well, this is, this forum, when we do these workshops, this is where we get the hashtag.
No, I, I.
Culture east anymore.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. We need to be, this is the only place we can talk and figure it out. So I fully agree with that because it's frustrating. You'd rather, you know, on a Tuesday, if you have a thought about something, you'd rather be able to call one of, one of you guys and say, hey, what do you guys think about this? Does this make sense for the city? But we can't do that, right? So we have to do it here. In terms of, because, because now we've kind of tied these two different things together, right? Utilities and a moratorium. I don't know what the appropriate way to, to continue forward. I know we talked about timelines and we have two weeks until the second reading. Whether it makes sense to workshop it next week some more so we can talk about it.
We can. If, can, Mr. De Lorenzo, can you get the staff looking at that, the CIP as far as what is the most strategically, the most, the highest priority as far as water treatment? Can we try to scale it down and see what we can come up with on that?
I guess, and that's the question is, you know, we're proposing an alternative, but the details aren't there. So.
Yeah.
You know, to look at it and be able to try to make a decision and see what the impacts are and how that's going to affect our community. We need to know what we're talking about and then what the impacts would be.
Yeah. And, and I don't support it, the two being linked. I think it needs to be a, an independent decision on the utility rate because that's a, that's a current ops problem, Mr. Mayor, of, you know, the, the, our water, wastewater challenges that have to be addressed. I think the moratorium should be a, a separate decision.
I guess it doesn't go away, whatever you do, right?
Well, we, we are sitting at a two-two vote right now. And our residents are mad as hell. They hate us. And, and I get the brunt of it because I'm sitting in this chair.
We get it as well.
That's why, that's why I'm tie, I'm tying them together. And I'm, I've already said it, I am not, I am not going to be in favor of these bonds on this next vote unless we put in a moratorium. I want that safeguard that says, hey, look, you're not building any more houses in our city until we get this right. So.
Well, then it may.
If not, we're going to be sitting on the, the deck of the Titanic and we're going to be raising, raising property taxes, our, our abhorrent to try to cover some of these improvements.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think.
You're in a difficult spot there, General.
I got it. I got it. But I don't think they, they need to be linked. I think they need to be two distinct decisions.
And top of that, I, I think there's, there's questions to be had about legality and risk. I know some other cities have this. So I, I don't know what their specific situations are that define how that.
We can talk about it.
Yeah. I mean, I think those are important pieces of information. There's a lot of aspects. You talk about employment. You talk about, you know, the type of development that we want, industrial, commercial, you know, does that affect that as well? There's, there's a myriad of aspects that are kind of fallout from this that I think are worth having that discussion about so that we all understand, you know, if we're tossing the grenade, you know, what's going to be, what's going to be hit by that frag, right? So in theory, I, I completely understand, you know. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not causing more damage by doing something quick, with little discussion, without understanding the full ramifications of it. And, you know, and I appreciate you bringing it, you know, during this time because that's the only time we can talk about it. But I think we need to have some scheduled time to talk about it with some more information and facts and, and try to understand that, that, what that whole picture looks like.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm going to go ahead and be even more candid than I usually am. I asked for an alternative other than going all in on everything, on all the projects that were proposed. And I pointed out at the last meeting that nothing was proposed. It was still the all or nothing. And to be quite frank, I think it's because it was known that my vote wasn't needed. They had three. So maybe now my vote is needed a little bit more. Come up with an alternative. Figure it out. Because I don't want to be in a perpetual state of being behind, but there are plenty of ears and hands, and again, plenty of interest by the state to keep our community thriving. So maybe now an alternative is a little more pressing.
That's great. I appreciate it. As far as the employment is concerned, Councilman Miller, we are a next, net exporter of working class citizens every day.
I understand that, but there is a portion of our population that is adjacent to building, right? All your tradesmen, you know, every street in Palm Coast has somebody on that street that, that does that for a living and supports their family like that. So, you know, my concern is when we talk about making it unaffordable to live here, you're taking away someone's ability to feed their family in Palm Coast, right? Not somebody else outside, but in Palm Coast. So it's important. And I'm not saying, hey, that's going to destroy the economy. But I think it's something we should consider and talk about and, you know, have the facts on that. How many people are employed by that industry? What are the possible ramifications of it? I don't have those numbers in front of me. So I think those are important to have.
Mr. De Lorenzo, do you have it off the top of your head? How many housing units come online every year?
Depends year to year. If I get my computer, I can tell you exactly. But last year was roughly between two thousand and twenty-five hundred. I'm not sure.
Yeah. So think about that. How many, how many are coming?
Um, the, you know, but it's economic based. Okay. So, I mean, in two thousand eleven, it was like a hundred, right? And.
Somebody call Toby Tobin, ask him.
These are COs or these are permits or?
We track them both ways.
I think COs are probably more.
I can give you an exact number for the last twenty years. It's, it, you know, it's not consistent. It depends on the economy.
Okay. Well, let's, let's look at those, let's look at those numbers and get them for us. And we can, we can workshop this some more next week. We have another workshop.
So would you like for me to amend, amend the agenda? I mean, these things typically need to be publicly noticed that you're going to be discussing about them.
Friday.
I think, yeah. I think maybe, no, because we have. Why don't we just, look, why don't we just bring it up again during council discussion? We all know it's a heads up. This will be in the papers. And I will do some diligence on my end as far as looking at the other cities that have had the moratoriums. And I'll even go as far as calling the cities and say, hey, you know, what did this, what impact did it have? You know, so we have all that information and we'll make it a part of the record for that day. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know what would go into an actual packet from that perspective, but we, nothing is stopping us from discussing it again.
No, that's, that's why I love these workshops.
Okay. So there's no task to me and no task to your attorney of looking into a moratorium or any of that? Because those are ordinance that require readings. They're not you.
So what's, what specifically is on the?
The two things that were mentioned before, the city manager's search and the wireless master plan.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have plenty of time, I'm assuming. Open forum. So anything else?
So just.
Wild assumption that we'll have.
Just, just so you guys know, so I'm looking at the utility, I know we do, I'm looking at the utility presentation from February eleventh and the issued residential COs, Councilman. You'll see, well, first, this goes to my point that I said earlier, two thousand twenty-three, we had a huge jump specifically in the new platted lots. You see that difference? Way big difference. But that's, yeah. So if we're looking at two thousand twenty-four, we had two thousand COs. Two thousand twenty-three was a lot. There were about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred COs. And then the years prior to that, you're looking around seventeen hundred COs. Yeah.
Well, no one, no one's denying that we have been hit with a fire hose in, since COVID. There's no, there's no denying that. But it, but it hasn't helped with the city being very friendly with developers and allowing them to rezon land that were initially designated as industrial lands to commercial, residential, primarily residential, like out on the west side.
I agree. I agree.
And I think those were some horrible decisions. And, you know, when I moved here, you know, we moved here, we thought this is going to, this is an up, upcoming city. Now, we have, we really moved here because of the schools. But, you know, you would, you would eventually hope that there'd be industry and jobs coming in that can help you support your family. Rather than that, I had to travel for another five, six years to sustain my family. So there's been some bad decisions and bad leadership. But we, we, we are the ones that have to right the ship, playing something. So. Good. All right. Any more discussion? Is that Jeannie back there? Jeannie, you got anything to say? Come on up real quick so we can get out of here. We got to go.
I feel like.
We got to go open a baby box.
The mayor's trying to, to burn time until twelve, I think.
Oh, I know.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Duarte C-section. And it's really refreshing to see some common sense up there. I do support the residential moratorium and industrial building. I have a twenty-seven-year-old son that lives with me. I live on a cul-de-sac where half of the residents on that cul-de-sac have their adult children living with them because they cannot afford the rent out there. And these stick houses that you guys are building that haven't had people buying them yet, they can't afford the cost of these stick houses. And we need the industrial. We need better jobs. My son works full-time and he cannot afford a rental. He cannot afford to buy his own place. So these industrial jobs out there hopefully can provide employment with better income.
Upward, upward mobility is the term.
There you go. Yes. We can't support the growth with the type of jobs we have. Working at Walmart, working at McDonald's, people cannot afford. We need other options for better jobs to, for better pay. I, I agree. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll close public comment.